Yeah, that would have been better. For second and then the next one.
Yeah.
Is it yours?
It is.
How are you doing?
I'm 13 years in July.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I guess. Yeah. So, do you live in better way or not?
But anyway, I can't.
And I don't get the crowd.
This is why we're not over there. I don't like.
When you get out of the city, yeah.
You hold enough respect for being up there.
Right. As I said, maybe try to go probably if you could.
Yeah.
Not down here. I don't, when you up there, you can at least see it down here.
That's the best way. And then down to 509.
Yeah, then I go.
518 and then.
599.
Oh, okay.
To go over.
And then you've got to get on 518. Yeah. That's true.
Mine.
Yeah. Exactly. No, it's just, it's possible. I don't know.
I don't blame you and we probably will and yes.
I do not.
I don't know if we decided.
Okay. Oh, yes, I know. Right. It's sort of like a secret backline.
Yes, I don't think.
You know, stuff like.
I'm sure we did. Oh. Oh, no. I'm telling them I asked them.
No, I don't. Are you?
Oh, okay. All right. Right.
Okay. But are you okay?
All traffic. Traffic. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, you're better than me.
Well, because I've never had the example of Thanksgiving. Yeah. We're in America.
The mic.
Yes.
Could you get, could you get?
I have. You don't have a device to hold on to. I don't know what it'd be. Right. Has somebody's device in your car?
That's.
And then you stop because that's.
It does.
And I expect. Let's get on that. Catch the one road which is the next one.
What? It doesn't.
Well, welcome everybody. Before we get started, I just want to say thank you very much for coming to the May 8, 2014 special meeting to discuss the Blue Ribbon Panel's findings with regard to the proposed Performing Arts Conference Center. But before we get started, we should do the Pledge of Allegiance. Betty, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our glad allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you everybody for being here. This is a great turnout for a very important, very, very important issue. As you can see, we have our Blue Ribbon Panel that has been working hard and I wanted to also make sure that everybody knows that we are going to be taking public comment. Just like at the city council meetings, we have the pink sheets up there and so I just want to give you an idea of how the meeting is going to roll out. When we first get started, I'll ask our chief of staff, my chief of staff, Brian Wilson, to give a brief presentation and introduce the individual members of the Blue Ribbon Panel who have done so much work. And actually, before we do all that, I want to talk a little bit about it. And then after that, then we're going to hear the presentation of the Blue Ribbon Panel members in regard to the three individual subcommittees and their respective findings. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I actually don't have it up in front of me.
Oh, you do.
Well, it's, yeah. Is this thing on?
Yeah.
All right. So, once we hear from that, then we're going to have a city staff presentation. Ade Irawalu, our new finance director is going to give a presentation as well as Patrick Doherty, who has been literally working on this project for years. And then what I think is also very critical in this important meeting is to hear from the public, you, about this. And so, while the Blue Ribbon Panel members may have their back to you right now, they have done such a tremendous amount of work. In fact, just yesterday, the city council received, I believe it's a 139-page report. Now, just the printing of that was not possible for all the members of the public, but this report in its entirety is going to be available on our city website. Also, what we did for each of the different subcommittees and the different aspects of the Blue Ribbon Panel's findings, you actually have those, those should have been made available in regard to the executive summaries per individual subject area. So, I just want to say that, you know, the council has been, has been thinking about this, the community has been debating this for years and years. And one of the things that we promised and that I promised on my very first day as your mayor was to really bring some objective criteria to this process and some objective metrics from which we could find a pathway forward as a community. And I think what we have today is a tremendous product and I thank you again for, for being here. And so, listen carefully, there's going to be an opportunity to, to ask a number of questions, but I also want to let you know that if you're like me, and I was talking to some of my colleagues, if you're like me, sometimes it takes a while to, you know, to digest all this information and you may think of a question or two, you know, well after this, this presentation. We are going to have another study session on this issue at our next city council meeting or the, the pre-meeting to that. I think that meeting will start at about 5:30 or 6:00 PM on May 20th. And so, that'll be a great opportunity for those questions or the ongoing questions. And then frankly, you know, this is an opportunity for the council and myself to really hear these recommendations, these findings for the first time. And it'll be an opportunity for the council to really drill down on these and then have some discussion and maybe even some debate on the issue. I wanted, before we got started though, oh, your book, sorry. This is, this is the product that the Blue Ribbon Panel has put out and Brian's going to walk through this in just a few minutes, but it's a tremendous amount of work and effort and we just are very thankful to this. And, you know, I do want to go back and, you know, sometimes as a little bit of time has gone by, there's a couple of things I really want to touch on. Membership in the Blue Ribbon Panel required a couple of things and that was expertise in their field, commitment to the community, and also what we thought was all unanimously agreed upon was that there couldn't have been a prior public position had been taken on this. They really need, the jury, if you will, or the VRP needed to come at this with true intellectual integrity. And, you know, so it appears that they have done that, I know that they've done that, and as a community, we say thank you to you. So, with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to our chief of staff, Brian Wilson, to get a start.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow Blue Ribbon Panel members and through the citizens that are here tonight as well. A special thank you for you to take your time out of this evening today to be a part of this very important process. It's been my privilege over the last three months to be a part of the Blue Ribbon Panel, to just be around these very quality individuals and I'd like to introduce them to you tonight. First, I have Bill Dorit-Olay, Dave Berger, and Rob Harpster. These three have focused on the economic development aspects of a proposed PAC, Performing, excuse me, Performing Arts and Conference Center. I have Scott Brown, Pam Smith, and Susan Strifel, who have been focused on the pro forma of a proposed Performing Arts and Conference Center. And lastly, I have Brian Bullard, and Kathy Ferrari, and Steve Lewis, who is not able to be here tonight. He had a pre-planned trip out of state and is not able to be here, was certainly a major part of this team and of our panel. And both, they will address some of the financing aspects of the panel.
Brian, can I interrupt you just for a second?
Yes.
I forgot to introduce Senator Tracy Ivey, who's in the audience. Tracy, can you please stand up and allow us to. Tracy, we'd like to, Senator Ivey, we'd like to thank you so much as a community for the $5 million you were able to provide, this community for the purchase of the land that we are now discussing for the possible site of it, and the $2 million that is essentially waiting for the decision for this with the state. So, thank you Tracy for all your hard work. All right, Brian.
So, thank you. Our panel, again, was appointed by Mayor Farrell on February 4th, 2014. And again, there were three areas that were under the purview of the panel to make findings and to make review of objective information, such as the review of construction cost estimates and financing options, review of the operational pro forma, and review of potential economic and fiscal impacts with a proposed Performing Arts and Conference Center. All panel members were provided with a notebook that contained the background information that was previously, previously available to the council and public. We have put that information out online through the city's website. It is available. It's fairly extensive of work that had been done to date prior to the Blue Ribbon Panel being convened. There has been quite a bit more work that's been done from the Blue Ribbon Panel in terms of specific research studies and work that has convened by these committees since that time and that will be part of the report that's brought today. In addition, we had a critical review of the September 2013 pro forma that was done by Duncan Webb. This was an update where we contracted to have an update to the 2009 data that was presented so that we would have current relevant information for the panel to review. We had case studies of economic and redevelopment impacts by different venues. We actually contracted that review out to a very well-respected company called Community Attributes and those findings are also included in the report. We have estimated economic and fiscal potential redevelopment scenarios that would happen and within the city. Very focused on objective data, very focused on what is our potential as a community in the downtown area and when we define that, we actually have over 400 acres in the downtown area. We're talking about 129 acres, which is basically right in the downtown core section of the city. The process that's been followed, there's nine panel members, again, divided into three subject areas, and each of the committee's work was presented to the committee as a whole. So, all panel members are familiar with the work of each of the committees and I believe there is consensus regarding the information that's being presented tonight. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce our finance committee, which is Ryan Bullard and Kathy Ferrari, and they will present the finance committee report.
Okay, so looking at the, at the project, based on the budget that was developed and reviewed by Mortenson Construction and Lorax Partners, they had a total capital cost of a little over, well, 30 million, 31 million 850. The city's already identified about 19 million in funding sources, so that leaves about 12 million that has to be funded for the project. During the course of our committee and prior to that, the staff developed some scenarios of what potential funding sources there were and how much could be raised. Those are the naming rights, grants, fundraising. The three scenarios capture, you know, sort of a conservative, a medium, and an optimistic view of what could be raised. For our purposes in the finance committee, we concentrated on the conservative, the low fundraising scenario. The other potential that the city has is to take advantage of the New Market Tax Credits, about 7.2 million. The challenge is there's a nationwide competition for the funds. Once they're allotted to the people that deal in the tax credits, then there's a competition locally for the funds with the people that obtain them. Something we never, we didn't really factor into the budget was the, the cost of the land because that was acquired with a grant from the state. The other piece we didn't evaluate because it's, it's not been decided on yet is adding a full service kitchen to the cost that's already been identified. There's benefits to that, there's also some revenue potential to that, that the pro forma subcommittee is going to, they looked at that more closely. So, the shortfall in financing as compared to what we have identified already is a little over 12 million. That really needs, the city needs to step up and provide some kind of temporary financing to give certainty to the project and to bridge the timing gaps of when we can raise money, when people will contribute for the naming rights, and while the New Market Tax Credits are being pursued. Based on our conversations with the staff, we found this is feasible. The city can do an inter-fund loan, lend itself money basically from one fund to the other temporarily.
Excuse me for a moment. I wanted to ensure that everybody was able to follow along with the PowerPoint since it's more summarized than the full written report. So, I believe, I didn't personally compile them, but I believe that in your notebooks, council members, towards the end, you have the actual PowerPoint. If you, if you prefer to follow.
Tab 5.
Tab 5. I just noticed that it's harder sometimes to follow when the summarized information is being presented in the depth of the report and I wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to follow the bouncing ball, as it were, as, as the presentation is being made. Give you a moment to catch up to where we are. We're on slide 14 right now. Sorry for interrupting.
That's okay. Am I talking too fast?
No.
Okay. So, basically, the city has the potential to, and it's within state law, to lend itself the money, in other words, from other funds to this project, provided that they charge the project a higher rate than they would make by investing it. And that rate is about 1%. We did some calculations, assuming that there's drawdown over time as the money is needed and that it would be for a little less than three years. We calculated it would probably cost the city about $300,000. At the end of the three years, then permanent financing would be needed for the amount that has not been fundraised. Because we have used the low estimate, which is about 4 million, we identified that there'd be about a little over 9 million that would need to be financed on a permanent basis. And that's assuming that the New Market Tax Credits don't come through to fruition. So, we did some calculations on that and about a $9 million bond at current rates of 3% would require debt service of a little over 600,000 a year. So, our conclusions. So, we didn't, we did not analyze the construction and development cost estimates in depth because we had two, two pretty expert people. One developed it, the Mortenson Construction Company, and it was judged to be reasonable by Lorax Partners. We did also review and found that the various projections made by the city and the fundraising consultants they hired seemed to be reasonable. We did identify that the, the need for temporary financing by the city is needed to make the project go forward. And then we also found that the term structures and the cost of the temporary financing appear to be reasonable. After the three-year temporary loan matures, you know, there's going to be some level of permanent financing needing, needed or it has to have been fundraised. Again, we concentrate on the low range of the amount to be fundraised of about 4 million and that leaves about 9 million to be permanently financed. According to what we've told by the city's finance director, that this $9 million bond potentially could be serviced by the city.
So, now we move on to the pro forma subcommittee for its report and I think, Scott Brown, are you the spokesperson?
Yes, I.
All right.
You want Russell and I want.
Hope to follow along then from here. Let me know if I don't.
So we didn't, we did not analyze the construction and development cost estimates in depth because we had two pretty expert people. One developed it, the Mortenson Construction Company, and it was judged to be reasonable by Lorax Partners. We did also review and found that the various projections made by the city and the fundraising consultants they hired seemed to be reasonable. We did identify that the need for temporary financing by the city is needed to make the project go forward. And then we also found that the term structures and the cost of the temporary financing appear to be reasonable. After the three-year temporary loan matures, you know, there's going to be some level of permanent financing needing, needed, or it has to have been fundraised. Again, we concentrate on the low range of the amount to be fundraised of about 4 million, and that leaves about 9 million to be permanently financed. According to what we've told by the city's finance director, that this $9 million bond potentially could be serviced by the city.
So now we move on to the pro forma subcommittee for its report, and I think Scott Brown, are you the spokesperson?
Yes, I am. You want Russell, then I want.
Hope to follow along then from here. Let me know if I don't.
So first of all, I guess I want to say that thanks for, it was really a privilege for me to be on this committee. There's a lot of smart people on this committee, and they give a lot of time and effort, and so you can be, personally, I think you can be assured that everyone put in a lot of effort and energy, and there are some really smart people here, so it's, so thank you for letting me do that. We were tasked with the, the task was to providing an objective and critical analysis of the operational pro forma for the city. And so the process that we went through for that is we reviewed community input and other studies that had been compiled prior to the forming of the mayor's Blue Ribbon Commission, and that, there was previous pro formas and comments from the community that we all, we reviewed and went over that for two meetings, we went over for that. Then we also reviewed community input that came in through the city's website from citizens of the community about their, and we took into account their thoughts and opinions about the facility. And then after that, we studied and reviewed analysts from the, we had three different pro formas that were generated by what we would call industry experts. And so the people that we looked at, one is from Nida T., I'm not going to try and pronounce her last name. She's the director of the McIntyre Hall in Mount Vernon, and she came, not only she, did she review the pro forma statements for us, but she also came down and met with us for one full meeting just to go in detail about her thoughts and comments on how she arrived at the pro forma. She submitted a couple of suggestions that we, she thought could be a possibility to what was the original pro forma, which was from Joe McElvein. And she also, oh yeah, and then on March the 6th, she had that question and answer session with us. We also looked at the original pro forma from Joe McElvein, and he's the director of the Edmund Center for the Arts. And then we also looked at the web management pro forma that was done in 2009, and he also provided comments to the 2013 studies that were, after looking at both Nida's and Joe's, web management also gave a review of their performance as well, so we looked at his comments as well. After doing that, we, the committee focused on Nida's revised pro forma, and when I say revised, she took Joe's original pro forma, made a few what she thought were reasonable suggestions and revisions to that, and because this appeared to be the most reasonable and relevant to the proposed Federal Way facility. Then after we took hers, we did what we call the sensitivity analysis by changing some variables, the what-ifs, right? What if this happened, what if that happened? Because we wanted to kind of see, just do a test of what would happen. So in your packets, we have different appendixes, appendices. A is Nida's pro forma with no revisions at all. That's just what she presented. Then we recognized that there might be a concern with some of the contribution revenue to the annual operating income, the people that may contribute. So what we did is we reduced the contributions by 50%. We cut it in half from what Nida had originally proposed for that. And then we didn't do anything else. We left all the staffing the same, we left everything the same, all the other expenses and the events and all that. The only thing we did was just cut revenue. And it's important to know that because originally we call this a hypothetically worst-case scenario, but people are going to make cuts to expenses if half the revenue from contribution goes away. But we left it there just so you'd have something to look at as a base, as a cost basis for Okay, so that's your appendix B. And then we got into appendix C, and here were some of the assumptions that were made, and we call this a reasonably conservative pro forma. And it's, so we still reduced the contributions from all of the non-government entities by 50%. So we left the city's contribution the same, but all the others, the donations and the grants and everything, we cut it by 50%. Then we did a reasonable, based on the comments from the experts, they felt like that maybe the rental income was too low, so we made modest increases to the number of events that would be hosted at the facility in terms of conferences and meetings for that, not the performances, but just the conferences and meetings. And what we did is we increased that by 15 events per year for that. So we made those changes. We changed the rate structure because Nida had given us, and it's included in your packets. We used Nida's rate structure for renting out the facilities. Yeah, okay, so for that. And then after that, by resulting in the number of increased meetings, we had slight increases in the number of equipment rental and the food and beverage. Mostly what we said is, and we use the word, it's $400 for coffee service for a meeting of 100 people. Again, we felt that was very conservative, but, so some of that food service or the beverage service, we increased that just a little bit based on the number of meetings and rooms. Then we also, based on Nida's comments, we reduced marketing by 10%. Now, that sounds strange, because you go, why reduce marketing? That's a key to making this facility work. But in reality, there was, the original pro forma had a lot of print advertising and what I would call the older ways of advertising, and Nida suggested that with the electronic media and social media that there was more effective ways, you could actually reduce your expenses and get better exposure through using some of the electronic media that's available for that. We also, this most hypothetical, again, based on the experts, we reduced, they start off with, I think it's five positions for the staffing, and we combined two of those to an initial startup so that, because it doesn't make sense to go, we didn't feel like it was, made sense to go in with a full staff when you're very first starting, so we said we would gradually move into that. So we combined two positions, such as marketing and development. We're not saying that that's the two to combine, we're just saying that's an option. We would leave that up to the executive director to figure out how they would do that. We felt that it was reasonable to cut one of the executive positions, and again, that was based on the comments we received from the experts. And we also reduced the office, the box office wages by 10%. That's just, again, based on the comments by Nida. So our findings were based on the reviews of content experts and the sensitivity analysis, there is enough flexibility in the pro forma statements for a strong executive director to manage income and expenses to achieve reasonable net operating revenue and expenses. For instance, what's on the screen? There's the three different scenarios. They also found that for the naming of the facility, we felt it should have regional significance and indicate its diverse functionality. So we want to, yes?
Scott, can we go back to the graph real quick?
Yeah.
Please. I think those are important numbers, I think, or I'd like to spend a little bit.
Of course.
Spend a little bit of time on that.
Yeah, of course.
Could you, excuse me, could you read the numbers for the people who are watching this at home?
Thank you.
Yes.
Should be on your, Scott, it's in your copy of the PowerPoint.
I haven't been following along, I'm just going from.
Page 26.
So Nida's revision, Nida's pro forma with no revisions. They, in the pro formas, they call it net operating revenue slash expenses. I would call it net profit. You can call it, you know, so the summary after five years for Nida was a, we had a net profit of $147,540, 147,540 profit. That's with Nida's original proposal or pro forma with no revisions. Then appendix B, we said, let's just cut 50% of the contributed revenue. So we cut that in half, and that come up, the net result from that was a loss of eight, after five years, a five-year loss, not, this is cumulative for five years, $821,922.
No, that's not, I see. When I first looked at that, I thought it was that one year, but it's.
No, that's a five-year, so.
That's cumulative.
Yeah, cumulative, that's important to know. And in year one, I'm not going to read all five years. If you'd like me to, I can.
No, no, no.
And then the, what we felt was the most reasonable, and that's ones where we still cut 50% of the contributed revenues, but we made some reasonable adjustments that I outlined before. That resulted in a positive contribution of $163,737. Again, that's, going over those reasonable assumptions that we made before, you know, eliminating one of the positions, increase room revenues, or meeting rentals by 15 per year, those types of assumptions I already went over. Okay? Okay, thank you. Thank you. So our conclusions are this. Oh, well, we can, yeah.
Do you want to say that again, Scott? Maybe you wanted to say that part again.
So our findings are that we, based on the reviews of content experts and the sensitivity analysis, there is enough flexibility in each, in the pro forma statements for a strong executive director to manage income and expenses to achieve reasonable net operating revenue and expenses, net profit, while maintaining the same level of contributions by the city which was, has been the use of $200,000 per year. We did not reduce that at all for that, for the first five years. Then we also felt that the name of the facility should have regional significance and also indicate its diverse functionality. In the conclusions, a strong experienced director starting in year zero would be critical to the startup and success of the project. A board of directors with financial expertise and connections to the community and the region will be necessary in order to achieve, to actively assist in fundraising for the facility and its programming. There's enough flexibility for revenues and expenses based on criteria such as the pricing, the kinds of events, the number of events, controlling your expenses based on the revenues that are coming in, that we felt like there's a lot of flexibility where a strong executive director can manage that. We felt that the modifications to certain aspects of the facility will strengthen the overall operations. There are potential net revenue opportunities if a full-service kitchen is added. We did not include the potential revenues of adding a full-service kitchen. If you could do that internally, there are positive incomes that can be made by selling the catered foods and things like that. And then it's also, we felt it is important for positive cash flows from the operation of the facility be held both, for both operational and replacement reserve accounts as determined by the management. So we felt like it's important to build up a reserve because there's, after a while, there's going to be some expenses that will occur.
Now to the Economic and Fiscal Impacts Subcommittee Report, and Dave, are you the spokesperson?
Yes, I drew the short straw.
You drew the short straw, all right. I'll try to follow along better than I did with Scott, sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This portion of the report I'm delivering on behalf of my. This isn't picking up? Okay.
Change. Please.
I don't have a holder. Thank you, Brian. So before I get into the presentation, I just want to remark that, Mr. Mayor, I agree with all the characteristics and qualifications that you sought in my eight colleagues and I, but there's one you left out, masochism. And the three of us actually were the ultimate masochists because we took on.
Still having difficulty hearing in the.
Formidable, the most formidable of the tasks. And in fact, our task was to assess the potential effects, if any, of the proposed PAC and hotel opening in the central part of the city, the city center, and looking at the future development potential of that 176-acre area around the parcel on which the PAC and its adjacent hotel would be built. I apologize for the fact we've got 14 more slides, but given the fact that this is the first opportunity for us to present this information to you, and you just received our full report from the whole panel, as well as the members of the public who are interested, pretty much what you're going to see mirrors the report that we submitted as part of the larger Blue Ribbon Report, Blue Ribbon Panel Report. I also want to note that you won't see on these slides the footnotes. There's extensive footnotes, not only in our portion of the report, but the other portion. But in our case here with these slides, for the sake of brevity, we did not put all of the footnotes, but all of our findings and conclusions are supported by the resource documents that are described in the report that you'll see. Okay, so now on to the summary here of our findings and conclusions in terms of economic and fiscal impacts. As Brian mentioned, there was a consultant, an economic research firm consultant out of Seattle that was selected by the city to do a case study analysis of five cities, three of them in Washington, Salem, Oregon, and Fairfield, Iowa, I believe that is, to look at cities that were similar to Federal Way and/or had performing arts and/or conference centers similar to the proposed PAC here in Federal Way. And the consultant developed a report, it's part of your larger binder there. By the way, I'm starting on page 32 of the PowerPoint presentation if you're following along that, in that manner. That research report that was done studied centers in those five cities. In all five cities that the consultant looked at and analyzed, they experienced positive economic and fiscal outcomes. In other words, patron spending and consumer demand increased, and the cities, those respective cities, received additional tax revenues following the opening of those centers. So that's development, redevelopment around those centers. Four of the five centers were intended as complementing facilities, not catalyzing, they weren't intended to be a catalyst for further development as part of the larger redevelopment effort in those cities. In one of those cities specifically, Linwood, the Great Recession stalled commercial development in the area surrounding that one center that was desired by the city to be a catalyst. Although all centers are supporting growth, our conclusion from that study is that general economic conditions, regional market realities, and differing geographic locations among those five cities were the key drivers of subsequent private development investment in the surrounding areas of their, of their performing arts conference centers. So the next part of our study was to look to the marketplace. So we actually sought opinions, both in some cases written form, most of them were actually conduct, where we conducted interviews, the three of us, your panel members conducted interviews. And what I'm going to present now are the findings from those interviews. There were a total of seven local, experienced local developers. These were developers that had approached the city, either had developed projects in Federal Way in the last few years, or actually were looking at further development in Federal Way, particularly in the Central Business District. And we contacted them because of their familiarity with the marketplace, how Federal Way plays in the marketplace, as to whether or not this proposed PAC and its adjacent hotel going forward would positively influence the private sector's potential interest in redeveloping the 176 acres surrounding the location of the proposed PAC. Our conclusions or findings from those interviews and from the written documentation that we received from the developers and the commercial broker, most of them, all of the developers and the broker that were interviewed or provided written opinions, expressed the belief that a PAC and adjacent hotel would positively influence development conditions in the surrounding city center area. Most of the developers that we contacted and received information from anticipate that the PAC and adjacent hotel would generate additional foot-track traffic activity that would be a catalyst for further investment in the potential city center reuse and redevelopment. Some of the developers cited the need for unique PAC architectural design elements and significant financial incentives in order to spur commercial and/or residential development investment in the city center. The third part of our review consisted of an analysis of the impacts, both economic and fiscal, of development of the PAC and adjacent hotel itself, as well as the potential for reuse and redevelopment in the surrounding 176-acre area, city center area. In terms of direct impact, this next slide that you see here on page 35, slide 35, is actually a summary from the web. is actually a summary from the Web Management Services update. You know that Web did the two previous studies, but they were also asked to take a look this year, in February of this year, at the new pro formas that had been developed because the, the cost of the PAC had changed. We had additional information, more detailed information on the number of events that would take place projected in, in the facility. So they looked at that, the pro forma committee had that information. They also reanalyzed the economic impact of the PAC if it were built. And what you see here in the, in the first bullet, first and second bullets there are those economic impacts. Thirty-two million dollar, there's a $32 million construction-related cost impact would create a multiplier effect in the local and county economy of approximately $59 million in one-time spending. This is the construction-related spending. $15 million in earnings, and 338 jobs created. Those are in-person years. Web also analyzed the operational effects of the PAC, the direct impact on the local economy and, and the economy within the county beyond Federal Way's borders, and concluded that as a result of the annual spending by the PAC itself, by the facility itself, its, its staff, plus audiences and, and meeting and conference attendees, would generate $3.2 million in spending to the local and, and county economy, $860,000 a year in new earnings, and 29 new jobs. So those figures that you see there are annual, every year, not one time. The one time is the construction, this is the ongoing effect. We also, again, wanted to analyze, as best we could, the potential economic and fiscal impact of redevelopment, reuse and redevelopment in the surrounding area. So we asked that an analysis be performed on what the effect would be for potential re-tenanting, that is, reuse by new businesses of existing vacant commercial buildings in that 176-acre area. As I indicated earlier, the, we also looked at the Web research, and we also took a look at the literature, which is extensive, on the kind of socioeconomic impact that culture, a cultural arts facility has, has had in communities all over the country. So these bullets summarize our findings and conclusions as a result of that analysis having been performed. In terms of one-time construction impacts, we, we selected three growth assumptions, and from those growth assumptions estimated the economic and fiscal impacts for reuse and redevelopment of the area surrounding the proposed PAC, including the 125-room hotel. So I'm going to describe those three scenarios briefly. Apologize for the fact there's a lot of detail there, but I'll, I'll try to go through it so you, at least at this point, have a, a general sense of what those scenarios were based on. The low-growth scenario was created based on full re-tenanting, and that is new businesses going into each of the existing vacant buildings in that 176-acre area. Those are commercial uses only, not residential. The mid-growth scenario is based on the Puget Sound Regional Council determined residential and commercial redevelopment density ratios in Puget Sound suburban areas, as applied to underdeveloped or vacant properties within the 176-acre city center area. The, the factors that were used to create this scenario were a 45 or 75 unit per acre figure for residential development projects, and a .5 or 1.5 floor area ratio for commercial projects. A floor area ratio is the ratio of square footage of building on a given parcel. So a .5 would be square footage equal to half of the square feet in the, in the total parcel, for example. And that mid-growth, this mid-growth scenario presumes full build-out of its growth potential based on currently available land and the 176 acres and allowed zoning in that same area. The third scenario was what we termed a high-growth scenario, and basically that's doubling the mid-growth density and far assumptions while remaining within, in fact, well within the allowed zoning and available land. Just to give you a, a quick illustration, it's not on the, in the PowerPoint, but it is in your, in the exhibit to our report, just to illustrate what do those ratios and, and density figures mean. For residential, in terms of existing buildings in, in our city center area, for residential, the Korean Women's Association senior apartments, which is located next to the transit center, that's 87 units per acre. So just think of that building and look at the figure that you see here, 45 to 75 units per acre, so you can see that the density of that building is actually greater than the target that we used for the mid-growth scenario fiscal and, and economic impact analysis. On the commercial side, the John L. Scott Headquarters Building, the Park Lane Office Building, is built at a .53 floor area ratio, again, which you can compare to the .5 to 1.5. And the Marriott Courtyard is 2.4, a 2.4 floor area ratio, because it's, it's a mid-rise building. So just as you think about these numbers, you think about those examples, and those are cited in the report, you can go back and look at that, just to give you an idea, what are those, what are those density and far ratios really mean? Next slide. So the tables on the following slides summarize the approximate one-time construction and ongoing economic and fiscal impacts of the low and middle-growth scenarios that I just described. All the figures shown are estimated impacts on the Federal Way economy and new tax revenues to the city government. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you want me to actually read all of these numbers out loud, but do you want me to?
Let's do it.
Okay. I'll do my best. My voice is still holding out, but barely. Okay, so Table A, which is the, the table on the upper part of that slide, is the low-growth scenario. That's re-tenanting of all existing buildings. This is just commercial, not residential. One-time construction impacts. Again, this isn't the PAC, this is the hotel and all other potential redevelopment, excuse me, reuse that could take place, re-tenanting in that 176 acres. So in terms of impact, of economic impact of that, that low-growth scenario, sales, retail sales would be 21.2 million, estimated. That's, this is one-time construction, basically TIs, tenant improvements for all of those re-tenanted buildings, if you will. 21.2 million retail, this is the retail category. Earnings, 5.4 million. Jobs, 121. Tax revenues to the city, sales tax, $48,634. Property tax, $16,276. For office uses, re-tenanting of office uses of those buildings, the numbers would be 7.1 million for sales, 1.8 million for earnings, 40 jobs, sales tax of 16,211 to the city, and 5,425 one-time property tax. We're still on this low-growth scenario that I described earlier for ongoing impacts. So this would be every year at full build-out of that reuse scenario. Retail sales, 57.2 million per year. Earnings, 21 million a year. Jobs, 669 created per year. Sales tax to the city, 486,336. This is new sales tax dollars to the city projected. And utility tax revenues, $588,467. Next slide. Okay, so now, these two tables are for the middle-growth scenario that I described earlier. So this would actually be redevelopment, not just re-tenanting of buildings, but actually redeveloping vacant and underutilized parcels in the 176-acre city center area. Again, for one-time construction, construction-related impacts, retail sales, $428 million. Earnings, $109 million. Jobs, $2,434. Sales tax to the city, $979,981. Property tax, $327,959. Office, $194 million. Earnings, excuse me, office sales, $194 million. Earnings, office use earnings, $49,600,000. Jobs, $1,105. Sales tax to the city, $444,978. Property tax, $148,916. And the third land use type under this scenario is residential. Again, because this would be redevelopment, so there would be, under this scenario, residences created, multifamily, most likely. Sales, $512 million. Earnings, $131 million. Jobs, $2,914. Sales tax, $1.2 million. Property tax, $392,693. Again, that was one-time construction-related economic and fiscal impact numbers. For the middle-growth scenario, ongoing impacts, again, this is the full build-out of this scenario. For retail, sales, $454 million. Earnings, $167 million. Jobs, $5,547. Sales tax, new sales tax revenue to the city, $3.9 million. And new utility tax to the city, $4.7 million. These are, these tables were created out of the detailed economic and fiscal impact analysis, which is attached to the Blue Ribbon Panel's report of this section of the report. So here are some additional findings and conclusions that, that the panel had on, in terms of economic and fiscal impact. The Blue Ribbon Panel didn't consider the high-growth scenario realistic under current and foreseeable economic conditions. As I indicated before, that's doubling of the mid-growth scenario. The numbers are in the attachment or the exhibit to our report. We just didn't feel like it was realistic enough to be able to put that table up there and show you the numbers. They're approximately double the numbers that you saw in the mid-growth scenario. Given input received from the developers that I described before, the developers and the commercial broker regarding the PAC's, PAC and hotels' positive influence on future market conditions, the Blue Ribbon Panel considers gradual reuse and redevelopment in the city center area as inevitable, yet unpredictable as to timing. And I'm going to go on to just present to you our, our conclusions, or findings, rather, with respect to the socioeconomic impact, reviews that have been done around the country on cultural arts center investments in, particularly in downtown areas of cities, large and small, around the United States. Fundamental finding in that regard from the research that we did is that cultural arts investment by cities points to the consequent attraction of private capital in the form of adaptive reuse of existing buildings, as well as retail, residential, and commercial revitalization of urban areas. So basically, the numbers that you see there, in terms of the research that we did, are supported by studies from around the country on cultural arts facilities and the kind of development that occurs as a result of those. The emerging creative economy depends on a combination of both public and private investment in arts and culture. Moreover, entertainment and social amenities are key reasons that residents feel attached to their, to their community. We also concluded that in order to leverage the city's proposed investment in a PAC, creating an economic development strategy, strategic direction, and a process is essential on the part of the city, city government. And we believe the strategic direction and process will serve to attract the reuse and re, excuse me, reuse of existing buildings and redevelopment of the 176-acre city center area. Thank you.
All right. The way we've structured the presentation, but you can override this certainly if you wish, would be to allow for questions now before the staff portion, or if you'd prefer, we could do the short staff portion and have all questions at the end.
Well, let's take a poll real quick of our council members. Members of the council, would you want to ask a couple of questions now, or should we go right to the staff presentation?
I'd go to the staff.
All right, to you then. All right, go ahead.
Right, so Adey Arulah can join me, our finance director, and we'll both kind of tag-team on this finance-related information from the two of us. I think it starts with information from Adey, so he's here, I'll let him go, but I have a couple of slides in the middle, so.
While he's getting set up, I do want to reiterate that the entire report should be, all of the details that we have in this big report, the 139-page report, should be available online. Chris, what do you think that is going to be on Congress? All right, thank you, sir. All right. He said right after, for those who couldn't hear, he said right after the meeting.
Good evening, mayor, council, the member of the panel. Let me give you a little bit of a background on how we did this analysis. I subscribe to the best practices that is developed by GFPA. GFPA is the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. We have over 18,000 members. All the good cities, counties, state supposed to conform to these best practices. Some of the ideas are, do you have enough fund balance, enough reserve to carry on for a year? Do you have enough reserve to pay for your employees in case of an emergency? So these are some of the best practices that I use to analyze the information to see, can city really do this? So given that background, we determine to project the estimated cost, the funding of the cost, how much can we really provide in 2014? How do we fund the balance after 2014? And, yes, after all the ceremonies and everybody has gone home, what happens in 2017? So some of the basic questions that an average Joe wants to know. Okay? How much does the project cost? Based on what you've heard, it's going to cost about $32 million. About 5 million of that in the infrastructure, about 26.8 of that in the building itself. Okay? So with $32 million, where will all this money come from? We are seeing, based on this information, we can get some grants, we can, based on the, the funding and the fund balance that the city has now. Take, for example, we have REIT, which we're supposed to use some of this money specifically for infrastructure like this. We also have some reserve that we can use for infrastructure and other things. By realigning some of those things, we can come up with, as shown, about 20 billion out of 32.
Scott, you have a question?
Just a point of clarification for the, the numbers here, it's a, it's white lettering with a white background, so they can't see those.
Yeah, I was worried about when they did the, the copies.
The bottom line reads the same.
You'll have to watch the screen, I guess. So for the couple of tables in there, you'll have to watch the screen, sorry about that. So maybe just backing up for one second because people were scurrying around. If you can't read the numbers there, I'll just hold them there for a minute because there's a lot of lines. Adey obviously didn't want to drag us through every single line here, but you can see there's a use of, of grants, CDPG money, which we'll talk about in a moment, state capital, which we mentioned previously that the senator had helped us get, and then some transfers of different funds in the city, recognizing that, and you'll see there's at least a half dozen there, if not more, related to our use of REIT, which is real estate, real estate excise tax, by the way, for, either for the project or using real estate excise tax to free up unrestricted money that money that we're currently using, that restricted money to pay for. So a lot of accounting gymnastics in here that is all on the up and up and great, it's a creative thought, and you may wish to dive into that in your question and answers. I also believe that in the report, you have this, it's that the PowerPoint, just to tell everybody why that happened, the PowerPoint has a black background or a gray background, and in an ink-saving move, we switched to a white background, but that for these two or three slides, it didn't help, that it lost the white letters. So now moving to the Section 108 loan, that's identified in that table, and people have asked questions about it, so I thought we would just have a moment, oh, Scott has another question.
Just to point out, it's under, tab two, page seven for that.
Tab two, page seven, you can see the chart that is not fully visible in your PowerPoint version. Sorry to make you jump back and forth.
So right now, just to summarize, the monies that we have available are about nineteen million, or at least that we have.
We're calling them committed.
Committed.
There are some sources there that are from, for example, the state, which becomes available as soon as we're in the construction mode. So it's available in the sense that if we move forward, it's available. The purchase of the hotel pad, we've had our development partners stand right here and inform you that they expect to pay a million dollars for that pad. Of course, that's only available when we have that contract in place, that's why it's best to say committed at this point, because there's some that depends on an action. But if you total all those available and committed sources, you have the bottom-line number here, the nineteen thousand or so.
Nineteen million.
Nineteen million, I'm sorry. Nineteen million, yeah, a little bit more important number. A few zeros among friends, right? Can I go to the next slide, or would you like to take a moment to look at this one more?
Go ahead.
The reason this is in here in the next couple of slides, related to the Section 108 loan and the New Markets Tax Credits, is because, one, it's listed, or both of them are listed in that source of funding, well, not the New Markets Tax Credits, but as mentioned, the Section 108 loan is listed in the last table you saw. And it's complicated, and people have asked a lot of questions, so we felt it was worthy of a moment here to discuss that. A Section 108 loan against our CDBG, let me tell you what that means. We get an entitlement every year in community development block grant monies from the federal government. Currently, we have, this year, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, so I'll say six fifty thousand. That is for many uses, which I'll talk about in the next slide. And the federal government allows a municipality to borrow or to receive five years' worth of our entitlement, so if it's six hundred and fifty this year, that's roughly three million, it's actually a little bit more, but let's just use three million, to receive a three million dollar lump sum payment, and then have twenty years to pay that back using that same source, that same yearly source of CDBG monies, with, of course, an interest rate. So our application, which was to create a fund, not specifically to fund this project, because if this project were not to succeed, to proceed, we would still have the fund to potentially use for other economic development opportunities in the city. That application for the fund has verbal approval from the Housing and Urban Development Office in Seattle, is being sent to Washington DC next week for their approval. And then, if the project moves forward, we would then seek the project-specific approval for the PAC to use that fund. The project-level review is much more administrative than the fund, so once the fund is approved, it's usually, just a question of all the paperwork, and it's a lot of paperwork. And one of the things that has to be considered, and it ties back to what we just heard from the Economic Development Subcommittee, is the kind of job growth that could potentially be induced by this development, that HUD, Housing and Urban Development, wants to know that as part of the paperwork. So this process has been extremely helpful to potentially that future process for the HUD money. It's very important to understand how the Section 108 loan works and how its repayment works. So again, as I mentioned, there's three million or so available in this loan fund, once it's approved, and that twenty-year repayment at the rate that it's, we don't know the rate yet, because it hasn't happened, but three, three and a half percent would be about two hundred thousand dollars a year. So with our current entitlement of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, let's see how that breaks down into the use of our CDBG money, a lot of people have been asking that. We fund human services activities that are extremely important in this community through two sources principally. One, our CDBG money, and then we use general fund monies to match that, so that we can stretch that dollar. And the reason we have to stretch it, or want to stretch it, is because, as you'll see in this slide here, we can only use fifteen percent of our CDBG entitlement for direct human services. Some people erroneously believe that all that money is for human services. We are allowed only fifteen percent for direct human services. We're allowed up to an additional twenty percent for planning and administration, we don't usually spend that in full amount, but we allow that, leaving sixty-five percent for capital projects and economic development activities. The capital projects can range all over the map, they can have something to do with economic development, it can have something to do with provision of services, and then, of course, economic development is somewhat self-explanatory. So as you see, that's given those other deductions on the order of four hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred per year that's available for capital or economic development activities. The repayment of a Section 108 loan would come from that last category, and at approximately two hundred thousand dollars a year, that would leave almost a quarter of a million left for these other capital and economic development activities with our CDBG money.
So to go back, I think some concern has been raised, Patrick, that this, this funding mechanism or this loan is, would potentially take money away from direct contribution to the most needy in this community.
Right.
And are you saying that that's just not the case?
Well, yeah, again, we are both required, but also have a cap to use our CDBG money at the rate of fifteen percent for direct human services. That's direct services to the needy, that's shelter, feeding, domestic violence assistance, all the things that you hear about and approve in grants. We have fifteen percent, we're required to, but it's also capped at fifteen percent. So if you do that math, or you do that deduction of almost a hundred thousand, they're ninety-seven five, then the planning at about a hundred and thirty, there's that four hundred and twenty-two thousand of our six hundred and fifty thousand dollar entitlement that is not direct human services money. That's why it's called the Community Development Block Grant. It's not the Human Services Block Grant, it's the Community Development Block Grant, which encompasses human services, encompasses economic development, which is really all about job creation. The interplay, I guess, to be philosophical for a moment, in this, the interplay in this is that CDBG is used to help those who always need assistance, no matter how good the economy's going, but to help grow the economy, so that the number of those who need assistance, maybe less potentially, build jobs, create, build the economy, but recognizing that there's always people who can't participate fully in the economy and need to be assisted, even in the most robust economy. So that's, that's what happens here with this money. Does that help?
It does. Deputy Mayor Verber, just a quick comment.
Yes, I just would like to add for clarification that, in addition to this fifteen percent from CDBG, the city allocates, and has allocated for, as long as I can remember, over five hundred thousand dollars a year for, from our general fund for direct human services.
Right. As I mentioned, we stretch that, we stretch, we're not able to address through just CDBG the level we know exists, in fact, probably higher than that, but the level that exists, and so we stretch that substantially by adding general fund money that doesn't have these restrictions. So moving to the New Markets Tax Credits, without going into a lot of detail, which, believe me, exists with this program, the way this works, and I can't go into too much detail, but basically, it's an allocation by Congress, just like the last was, an allocation by Congress of tax credits to high net worth individuals who purchase these credits, obviously to help them with their tax burden, and those credits are their, excuse me, their investment of purchasing those credits helps to fund projects, economic development projects. They can be public facilities, like this would be, or they can be direct job-creating facilities, which is very common. I mean, it could be a private development in a distressed area, but because it's a distressed area and it creates jobs, it could qualify for this money. Or in our case, a public facility in an area that needs redevelopment, that's another angle. The allocations go to what are called community development entities, they're very special financial and fiduciary entity, one, the largest one that we know of, and in fact, we pay for consultancy services from them, is the National Development Council. Those CDEs, to use the acronym, receive these allocations every spring, they haven't received them yet, Congress is acting a little more slowly this year, but they pretty much have to by mid-June, because on June 12th, the national convention of all the CDEs happens in Washington DC, where they all get together and talk about what projects they're going to fund. So they need to know their allocations to have this national convention, and it's happening, and the rooms are booked, and I'm sure that they're not going to cancel that. So the consultant told me yesterday, it's very likely that these allocations will happen later this month, and then they'll be able to go, all the people can go to Washington DC. Our consultant that we're paying for will in fact be taking our project and shopping it around at that national convention in June to try to line up credit, tax credit allocations for this project. I was also told, I think we mentioned before, months ago, that the land use process, you all authorized a sixty-five thousand dollar expenditure to engage the land use approval process, that should be, the decision should be forthcoming this month, and that'll be a great thing to have kind of in the, you know, under our belt, to go to these community development entities and seek the allocations. Even higher than that, of course, would be a positive, Council, green light of the project. One of the things that these CDEs will immediately ask back to the person representing our project and us will be, what's the status of the project? So if, you can imagine, if the answer is, well, it's been green-lighted and it's moving forward, that's a more robust answer than, we're waiting for you. So it's kind of a, who's showing, you know, the money first? And again, I think we mentioned earlier that up to seven point two million dollars could be leveraged, which would substantially reduce that approximately nine million that was identified previously to have to be permanently financed. It would be practically erasing that if it were to happen. So I'll, there's room for questions in a slide or two, but I just wanted to get that out there, because people always ask, and I think we're back to Adey.
So going back to what the project will cost, and what we have available, or that we will have available by the end of two thousand and fourteen, so now we have two point seven eight million to be able to complete this project. Yes, these two point seven eight million, there's a potential to be able to get money after 2014, like the seven point two million that you just heard about, like the other fundraising events, but before those come in, we have to build the building. So how do we bridge the time that that money will come in and the time that we need to complete the building? So that is what these two point seven eight million will do. So pending the time that other money come in, we need these two point seven eight million to complete the project. And I think a part of the beauty, if we're going after somebody to pay for naming right, they need to see the building that they want to pay for, you know? So I think this will help us complete the project. So how do we fund this money? That is a big question. There are two issues regarding the outstanding balance, we have the temporary financing before other fund, funding, which is the bridge, okay, before there's other money coming. How do we fund that balance? The second, the portion that we're not able to get money for, so how do we pay for it? Those are the two major questions. As of now, as of the end of 2013, as of the end of 2013, the city had seventy-two million dollars of various funds. These seventy-two million dollars is like maybe the money set aside to fix the road, the money set aside to fix our equipment when they break, the money set aside for a rainy day. In other, for their money not to be sitting idle, they are invested. We know what the market is doing. We invest most of our money to reduce the risk with the state, and we're making big interest income of zero point zero nine percent. So now, the question is, why do we want to borrow money from somebody else for now, when we are earning this little on our own? So those other funds that contribute to this seventy-two million, if we say, okay, this fund, the traffic, the street construction, you have ten million, instead of making zero point zero nine percent, who pays you one percent? Which is less than what we will pay the bank? So the fund will get adequate money, it will also cost the city less money, so both entities win. Here, the state also makes sure that when we are lending money to ourselves, we follow certain guidelines. So the guideline is, you cannot lend money to yourself below what you are making from the state investment. So they're just trying to make sure that we're not taking money from street and just lending it to something else without adequate return. So this way, the lending fund will make one percent, which is more than point zero one nine. Also, the building that we're building will pay less, because if we had gone to the bank, we'll be paying more than three percent. Another caveat that the state add is, in order to make sure that we're not moving this money permanently, instead of lending it to ourselves, you can only do it for a certain number of years. So that they want to make sure that if you say the street is lending money to the general fund, and you are doing it for thirty years, is that really lending, or are you diverting the money completely? So the state say, well, you must do it within a certain number of years, and we're conforming, and that is where the three years come in. So we can do this, if we are able to do that, again, because the beauty of it is, it will be a drawdown. We will not take that twelve million in one scoop, we will take it as we need to pay for the construction. So actually, in the first year, most likely, we will not pay that one hundred and twenty thousand dollars in interest, because we're taking it as we need it. So the only time that we will pay this one hundred and twenty thousand probably will be towards the end of the third year, because that will have been the time that we will have used up all of the twelve million. And again, keep in mind, as we're constructing this, we're still also looking for other funding. If those other funding come in, we would not really have to borrow the entire twelve Based on what we're looking at now, we're seeing the naming right, there's a good chance that we will be able to get about two point two million. If everything really, really, really looks good, we can actually have three point five million. The fundraising campaign, it's possible we'll only be able to get about seven hundred and fifty thousand. If everything works out good, we can make about a million dollars. Grants, we can get about a million, or it can be as a million, five. And of course, the New Market Credit that we talked about, I assumed the worst scenario, you know, so it just didn't work, and that is where the eight point seven million comes in. It's just, it's just, instead of getting the seven point two million, we didn't get it, that is why that is blank. I say, okay, if the worst didn't happen, can the city really afford this? Because we need to take it from one side to the other. Most likely, we know, we probably will come some Most likely, we know, we probably will come somewhere in the middle or to the left. But from my perspective, their strategy is very, very conservative. It's just not, all these other ways will not come through. Okay. Worst scenario, now we will have nine million, almost nine million that we have, can we really make payments on this nine million? So we can go to the market, sell a bond for $9 million for 20 years. If we do that without the issuing cost, we're looking at $600,000. Now, the question is, within the operation system that we have now, where are you going to come out with the $600,000? I'm saying, if I look at just my general fund, and I'm giving you a little bit of background, this is what we did in 2009. Based on the grants, the tax, after we collect our revenue and we pay the bills, we have, we have this million. $2.7 million in 2009. In 2010, yes, you will ask me, how did we go from 2.7 million to 192,000? The way we operate the general fund, as we needed, the utility tax that we collect sits in a different account and we take it into the general fund as we need it. So in 2010, this is how much that we transferred, not necessarily how much we collected in utility tax, but the amount that we transferred to support the general government. We transferred 11.8 in 2009, but in 2010, we only did 9.5. That is why this number looks like it's out of work. If we had transferred 11.8 like we did in 2009, this also will be higher. In 2011, that is when we started some of the retrenchment of positions. And that is what is reflected in 2012. Our spending went down from 40.8 million to 38.6. And again, that explains this amount. Despite the fact that the amount that we transferred is also less than what we did in 2009 and what we did in 2011. Given these net differences in those five years, we will be able to afford $600,000. Another connection to this is the community center that we just. Every year, we subsidize the operation of the service. We also transfer money for a rainy day for the community center. Say, well, if the air conditioning were to go out, what do we do? If the roof is leaking, what do we do? Saving money for a rainy day. As of the end of last year, for the rainy day for that community center, we have a sizable chunk without having to alter the operation of the center to be able to spend a million, a million and a half to fix the roof, to fix the H-far, to fix the air conditioner, to fix whatever, to replace the television. That is part of the best practices that we need to make sure we have in place. If things go wrong, tomorrow, all of a sudden, a bridge collapse, do we have reserve to be able to fix that right away? Maybe we'll be able to get federal grants and all of that. That is the beauty of setting that reserve. So in the community center, we have that reserve to be able to deal with what is needed because we were contributing a sizable chunk of money every year to build that reserve. we were putting into reserve every year about $270,000 to make sure if the roof is leaking, we're able to fix it. Now, if we have about a million five in there, do we still need to be contributing that much money? No. So that money can be used for something else. Again, we also subsidize the operation of the community center. Every year, maybe about a half a million to subsidize the operation. Last year, at the end of April last year, community center was in the hole by over $40,000 just for the four months. This year, as of the end of April of this year, for four months, they are only in the hole for about $8,000. What does that mean? Because if they were only in the hole for $40,000 for four months last year, and this year, instead of $40,000, it's only $8,000. Even though we have in the budget to put additional money into that to support them, most likely, they would not need as much as we've put in, in the previous year. That is additional saving that can go to whatever project that the city wants without affecting the operation of the community center, without affecting any other operation of the city.
So Dave, what's the, what's the total that we've, that we're going to project saving from projected money to the convention, excuse me, the community center that we can transfer over to allocate toward this?
In terms of our annual deal, we will have the amount that we're contributing to the reserve fund now, just for the reserve. If we stop at 1.6 million, 1.5 million, we have about 234 that is budgeted in 2014 to be transferred into the reserve. And if we don't need the reserve anymore, you have that 234. We have 500, about $500,000 that we use to subsidize just the operation. Based on what they have earned as of the end of April compared to April of last year, most likely, instead of transferring that 500,000, maybe it will be about 200,000. So we're bringing almost about 800,000 that we're transferring to the community center, we're bringing it down to about $300,000 annually with the potential of another 500,000 available for anything else.
So those two numbers, the, from the operating and the reserve combined, almost hit that 600,000?
Yes. Without even, and that is just one. If you look at these, which stand by itself, two.
Utility tax?
This is general fund. You have over a million that we can also use anyplace else.
So is your opinion that we, Councilmember Duke?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead and then I'll...
So is your opinion that we could absorb a debt service payment of $600,000 a year?
Yes, without affecting any of the services that the city provides now.
Thank you.
I think that might have, might answer that, but I'll answer my, ask my question anyway. Okay, because I'd like to know what the best case scenario and the worst case scenario is, and how much money would we be putting into this project? And I'm assuming that's, these are just capital dollars we're talking, we're not talking operating, right?
In terms of the money to put into the project?
Yeah.
Like, maybe I can answer that. So in the scenario...
We're not getting these numbers on, in what we have here.
Yeah, sorry, the, in the, in the numbers that you've been presented related to the capital, we're using the sort of conservative case where we only get $4 million from naming rights, grants and sponsorships and local fundraising, even though the potential's higher, we're only using the four. That coming down from the 12.8 million that's sort of unfunded at this point results in the approximately nine million, it's 8.78 or something. So using that nine million dollar number, that, the, as we heard a moment ago, would, it resulted in about a $605,000 annual payment. So the $605,000 annual payment would be the one that we were just addressing with potential sources from the drawdown in the amount, or the reduction in the amount of funds we're allocating to the community center. And then that table that was just up there was just demonstrating how much overage we have as yearly, yearly ending fund balance. The operating subsidy that's been imputed into the pro formas, all of them, there, this is one, the one constant, if there's any constant, was no more than $200,000 from the city. And while no decision's been made on any of this, of course, the kind of operating assumption for the last couple of years, probably three or four, was that that, most of that money, if not all, would come from the lodging tax revenue, which currently is 220,000 or so annually. And by the time this project would open, plus another hotel being added, would probably be on the order of 260,000, 270,000 a year. So the subsidy for the operations would not, is not intended to come from general fund, but instead from taxes paid by visitors, not by our residents.
Well, I just wondered, how, how long would the annual payments of 600,000 go?
The scenario you have is 20 years. That's a 20-year payment. Yes, yeah. Obviously, you can pay off early, just like we have with other projects.
I do think it's important to reiterate, because sometimes we start throwing numbers around and we, you know, we've been going for a little while. It's important to note that this is not a total worst-case scenario, but on the end, but sort of on the edge of a worst-case scenario, that the delta that we'd have to bond at the end of three years would be nine million. And the debt service on nine million would be 600,000.
Right, you see on this table here, the, what we're calling it likely, and maybe that's...
You can barely see that.
Maybe we should, oh, you can't see that?
Barely.
Oh, sorry. Well, I don't have another version to show you, but that one there that you can barely see has a naming rights of two and a quarter million, fundraising of 750,000, grants of a million. In the likely, you might, the mayor's sort of suggesting that's more like conservative side. And the potential, three and a half million, a million on fundraising and a million five in grants. We're putting the New Markets Tax Credits in the potential because we just don't know. Obviously, if we get that and we're doing everything we can to, that's a huge benefit. That reduces it to, you know, less than 2 million.
Yeah, it would be nice to have a table that shows if we get this, this is what we would pay. If we don't get this, this is, people could be concise on one table.
Well, as we move forward to the next study session, we can prepare tables that have just separate tables instead of complicated interrelational tables so that you can see kind of the two or three cases.
The two, the different cases.
Yep, no problem.
That would be very helpful.
And it won't be with white.
Thank you.
What's on the slide there is on page 55 in our books. Councilmember Duke?
I'm sorry?
Page 55 in our books, that slide.
Okay. Councilmember Melody?
This one? Okay. Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay.
I'm sure anybody else can.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay, thanks. I'm just wondering if you can tell us what the, the differences this year from last year at the community center, why are we seeing such strong numbers all of a sudden? Is it because of, have we raised our prices? Are there more people going there? Can we count on this in the future?
Actually, from my own, actually, personal experience, I try not to go to the community center at noon. Because I think, and I, I think we have great staff, that they've really revamped the place that it is the place to be. So there's big growth in membership, so there are more people coming in than ever. And also, the city, in the past years, has spent so much money, has set so much money aside to build that reserve. And that is why, as of the end of last year, we had about 1.6 million in reserve just for the community center.
One thing I'll add to that, because it touches on your second part of your question about, can we count on that? And of course, you know, I don't have a crystal ball that you don't have, but, but one of the things that's been the hallmark of the management of that center has been to keep it relevant and, and contemporary and updated every year, whether that means equipment changing with the times. Because as you all know, if you, if you go work out, you, you might try something else in another place and go, God, they, they have great equipment over there, why don't we have that? They know that, our staff know that. So they're updating the equipment and they have creative programming. They've got great classes, great, you know, and that changes too. So they don't just find one business model and just sit on it and then watch that kind of decline. They're, they're constantly keeping up with the times. So that's, you know, is it guarantee? I guess I don't have guarantees, but it certainly is the intention to stay very competitive in the market and relevant and capture that market share continuing into the future.
Well, it's, it's astonishing. I actually, I took my little boy swimming over there at the community center on a Sunday. We got there at about, maybe two o'clock and we had to wait 40 minutes just to get in the pool. And that's how long it took just to get in to the area where you could get into the lockers and start swimming because the play, they, they were taking names, it was like you're at a popular restaurant and they were taking, and they were literally calling people on the, on the speaker as your reservations were on. So, Councilmember Honda?
Oh, thank you. I think I need to... Hold on.
Wait, one second. Let me reach a... Sorry.
It's taped on this side.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. This has been very interesting, but in addition to the community center, we also have Celebration Park and we have Dumas Bay, which is very much loved by just about everyone in this community. Dumas Bay needs some work done, to put it very mildly. And I don't want to lose sight of whatever happens at the park, that we have a beautiful facility at Dumas Bay that we need to have some money available to fix and to give it the potential that we always wanted it to have. So what do you have to, what's your opinion about that?
Thank you very much. I think a part of the analysis that I have done is to be able to go through each fund and working with the finance committee to make sure first, our buildings, not just the community center alone, this building and other buildings, do we have adequate reserve to deal with emergency? Do we have adequate reserve, something just all of a sudden, maybe there's a sinkhole at the park, I don't know, something that we just can't think of? Do we have adequate money to be able to step up and fix it right away? Maybe we'll be able to get some money from federal government or whatever, but can we step in and fix it? Yes, I've looked through to make sure we set money aside. And I will make sure we're carrying stone by working with the council to say, well, we will set this much aside for this building, set this much aside for the park, set much aside for the street, set much aside for the stormwater, set much aside for IT. And based on this analysis, yes, we do.
Well, and I do want to say in regard to Dumas Bay, in response to Councilmember Honda's questions and concerns on this issue, and I think we all believe that Dumas Bay has a tremendous resource to this community. We are, I've asked our staff, our Parks Director, Ken Miller, I'm going to be getting a tour of the area. What we're going to be doing is reviewing and, and developing a five-year and a 10-year plan and really looking at the business plan and seeing that the facility we have there is fitting the market well enough. I mean, that is a facility that we've turned around operationally, thanks to Kerry Rowe and the leadership over there previously, where we've turned around that operation. But the question is, in the long run, what are we going to do with that gem of a facility? And I think renovation in the long term is necessary. The question, I think, is a good one, is where does that capital money come from? And I think we need to have a plan for it. So, I don't know if anybody has anything else. We're going to be looking at that though and probably address that at some point. Councilmember Rosowski, you want to... want to?
Yes, I do, Mayor. So, first of all, thank you for this analysis. I guess, ever since I joined the council about, a little over two years ago, I've been studying these reserves as well as part of Federac, and wondering about the reserves held, and are they adequate or are they over what's adequate? And obviously, I'm glad you used the community center as an example, because that shows very well where we're at. And this is after a major recession, a great recession, that we've been able to accumulate and hold on to these reserves. And so I'm very optimistic about what you presented here, about using some of these reserves, investing in our city. And times are getting better, based on what you showed in terms of the income level. I mean, we're doing better on sales tax, we're doing better on utility, we're doing better in just about every area now, as you'd expect coming out of a recession. But one thing I wanted to ask was about the rate on the bond. Now, if we're talking, let's say that scenario comes to play where we're having to use that $9 million bridge gap. We put in 3% here. Another 1% on $9 million, it's a good, it's a good sum of money. So is it really reasonable to expect a 3% bond in this low interest rate environment right now?
Yes, actually, yes. I talked to the bond underwriter that I've worked with, and also, I actually just helped complete a bond sale for the city of Ellensburg this week. You know, so the current market, if we were to sell bond today, based on our rating, yes, we would be able to. Yes, this 3% does not include the issuing cost. The issuing cost would be maybe additional 4,000 or whatever per year, but yes, the 3% is real. Yes, is the market, I think we've seen the bottom of interest rate. I think the only place for it to go, and some of the bankers on the panel can speak to that too, I don't think it's going to go any lower from here. I think it's up from here. So if we are going to do this, we need to step in and do it, and, you know, otherwise, the only way to go is up for the interest rate.
And another percent on $9 million annually is, it's a tight sum. Okay, thank you. Great, great analysis.
You know, I, actually, we are going to have another opportunity for council to make a question, but before I turn this over, Lydia, go ahead.
Again, thank you very much. And I know there's a lot of reading we have to do. However, word says, how much can we provide now on the PowerPoint? The new market rate tax is not included in there, so is there a time when that would be added to this, which would then-
The new market rate on the scenario of borrowing the 9 million, I'm assuming, no, we're not getting that. So again, taking almost the worst scenario. And if that 7.2 million comes through, what is left is-
Less than 2 million would be lost.
So if we were to, and Patrick, you talked about, if we move before, if we move on this before June, then does that increase our likelihood of getting the 7.2%?
Well, you know, I want to be careful that I don't say something that's incorrect. What I was told by the consultant yesterday who were paying to promote our project and take it to Washington DC and help us with all the paperwork, is that everything that we do that further readies, I think is the word she said, the project is perceived as positive momentum by those funders. So the least we would want is that that land use permit has been done, so we can say it's a permitted project, and we're just on the eve of issuing that permit. The next step, of course, which is a big one, is council greenlighting the project. And if that, if that were to happen, you know, in time, or even if it were on the eve of happening, and we could characterize it that way, in June, that would be huge. Because then again, those funders that this person's going to go to and literally have across the table discussions about our project, they're going to say, what's the status of the project? Where is it? Is it ready? And so the better that answer of readiness is, the better your chance of getting funding. That doesn't mean it's a guarantee, though. There's competition and lots of-
It increases our chances, though.
Yes, it increases.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Birbridge.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification that resulted from Councilmember Sephardos' question. And I also would just like to add a couple of things that we need to be looking at. One is the existing building climate, and it's been alluded to a little bit, but I think you pointed out more directly. Coming out of the recession, the costs are still a little lower than they will be in another year or two, and that's another point to consider. And, but also, in the overall picture, what would be the prudent use of those existing funds if they are only earning 0.09%? I think one could make a case that a prudent use of those funds would be to leverage them for projects that would expand the benefit to the city in so many ways. You know, we could think of other projects, too. This is something we have identified as having significant value, and those values have been enumerated here tonight. So just some thoughts for our consideration as we move along with this.
Councilmember Duke?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up about the new market tax credits, since I'm the one that brought them to the attention of the city. And for you, Lydia, the more complete, the more ready our application is, the greater our chances is, because I used to get the low-income housing tax credits when we built our housing. The more complete, the more ready we are, the greater our chances are we're going to get it. We're a small community, we've got some really great need here, so our case would be very strong. But if we're as ready as we can be without the money, we show all the other sources of money, we're going to score higher than a lot of others.
You know, I think it's really important to, thank you very much, and thank you, council, for your questions. We did promise public comment. I only have one pink sheet, and so I want to make sure that anybody who wants to talk has an opportunity to do so. And the pink sheet I have is from Byron Hiller. Byron, come on up. And if anybody else wants to, wants to speak, let us know, and we're going to start with Byron.
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for allowing my time here. I do want to say to the panel that I do respect you, I know most of you, and I respect your report. I think it was very well done. I guess my thought is not on your work, but it really goes back to the city council, and that is, how can you represent the taxpayers of Federal Way by not having done this two or three years ago, before you obligated us to the point we're at now? So that's really my concern, is that if we would have had such a complete, thorough report two or three years ago, or two years ago, one year ago, it would have made a lot of our decisions easier. We could have had the proper debate. But now we're saying we're running out of time, we're saying that it's too late to change course. A few other things that I'm hearing is that we're celebrating that we're still losing money on the community center and other projects in Federal Way. That shouldn't be a celebration. Until those projects are not losing money, it's not, nothing to celebrate about. The tax credits, the new market tax credits, everything I can see about that is like going to Vegas. I'm going, our company goes to a shopping center council to shop projects. We don't go there thinking that it will or won't happen, we don't know. And I think that's really what's come out of this discussion, is that those tax credits, we don't know. And to keep promising them, they were promised in December, if we do this, and this, and this, they're going to be there. Now we're saying it's going to be shopped by many communities all across the country, we're competing for them. I think that's, again, going to Vegas for that money. And then as far as loaning ourself money to make more money, that just doesn't make sense either, to say that we're going to loan some of our funds to ourselves to make an extra percent or two of interest. That only works in a government-thinking model, not in a private model. My other concern is what limits the city's exposure to more contributions that might be needed if our worst-case scenario are worse than that is met. In 2008, a lot of companies went way past their worst-case scenario. Ask Boeing, ask Microsoft, ask a lot of the companies out there, their worst-case scenario was not the worst-case scenario. What important areas of city will receive less money due to this kind of report? Well, you answered a lot of my questions today, and I appreciate that, but I still have to focus on the fundraising part of it, and that is, if money is taken from fundraising efforts in Federal Way for this project, it will come out of other projects. It will come out of Rotary, it will come out of Fusion, it will come out of multi-service center, and that will hurt those projects. And we've already had people speak to that. So now that we have a solid report, my feeling doesn't change, and that is, I support the building of the PAC, I don't support running of the PAC, unless you can, you can answer those questions. I also believe that the taxpayers of Federal Way still should have the ultimate say to obligate these kinds of funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Byron. You know, Byron, I did turn off the timer in case you had anything else you wanted to say.
Well, I had a lot, but that's fine. I mean, those are my-
I turned it off because, you know, Byron, and one of the reasons why, you know, I sent you some material earlier today is because you were selected by the Mirror to represent, you know, this, your perspective. And so I wanted to make sure that you had, was there anything else you wanted to say?
I think those encounter my points. Anything else would just be an elaboration on those, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. It's an important perspective. Well, we are here to hear from you. Oh, I have another one. Thank you. John Wildy. And we need some more comment after that.
Yes. I guess my question isn't so much about what he just said, but I'm just looking at the numbers, and I was just curious if those numbers took into consideration if what the city will have to incur later in terms of road improvement. I was coming from Federal Way on the other side of 320th, coming up Peaslee Canyon, it took 45 minutes. Going the other side, it can get that way, too. So what's coming to me is that, you know, we're going to have to spend money on roads, improvements, lights, getting in and out. And these, if people come here and they can't get in and out of this city, then it's going to be a negative experience to come to the PAC. And then they're not going to come. And then those revenues that they're projecting on those pieces of paper of these businesses that they're going to get, and jobs are going to come, they're not going to come back. So, I mean, I'm just wondering if we've taken into consideration if there's a negative experience and people can't get in and out. I'm not really one of the big financial people on doing these big numbers, but that kind of concerns me. Also, the idea of what we're going to have to spend on police enforcement, to all the parking, all the pedestrians, all the new business and foot traffic that's supposed to be there, how's that going to be policed? We have to pay for that. And so if we're going to end up subsidizing, end up paying for more, and then people come here and have a negative experience, do these numbers take into consideration what that's going to be like if people can't get in and out and they don't come back? I hope what I'm saying makes sense, you know, is that I'm not trying to be against it. I think it'd be great to have something come to the city of Federal Way that's reviving us. It's a great thing so far, but I can, everybody where I live around is like, we can't get in and out as it is. So if they can't get in and out, how's it going to be a positive experience, and how are these numbers going to play out? I hope what I'm saying makes sense.
Well, thank you, John. And you know, we saw you at the grand opening of the police substation, just, actually, on the other side of the transit center yesterday. So the special operations unit and the traffic unit are going to be centered on a daily basis out of that area, probably within 100 or 200 yards of the facility. So I think just operationally, I think that would probably be addressed, and that's why we wanted to get an operation center right there, within a stone's throw, literally, of the facility. As for the traffic or the road improvements, I do know that the city of Federal Way is the envy of the, of the community, of the region in regard to its very progressive pavement and paving program. And so, but it's something that, you know, these kinds of indirects, I think what we're hearing, and we hear it loud and clear, is that there are sometimes unintended consequences. We really want to keep our eyes on those, that that actually may have budget implications. So we'll look at that.
Just one more quick question I forgot to say. And, you know, when political pundits come through, or other televangelists or whatever come through, when they wanted to go to the community center, they were turned away because they couldn't have political events there. So one of the things is, is that if this PAC is going to come through, is it going to allow all venues to come through, or is it going to be like the community center and say, sorry, but the potential president come through, or no candidates can come and speak there? If it's going to have that kind of restriction, I would hope that you guys would consider making that restriction open, so that anybody could come and use it, not like the community center?
Thank you. I know that there was concern about, you know, political, but we'll keep an eye on that. Thank you very much. Peter Townsend, Peter? And then we've got Margaret and Betty. Margaret Nelson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council and advisors. I've got a couple of concerns. But first of all, I think it would be very helpful to know what's happened with the city of Linwood. You mentioned that they were the only one like us that hoped it, hoped the project to be a catalyst, the others were not. So it would be very interesting to me to know, when they got into that project, what their percentage of debt, let me phrase this carefully, what their percentage of possible debt that they could borrow was anticipated when they went into it, and what it is now. I'd like to know how they've dug out of it, what the effect the recession had on them, and are they still smiling?
Oh, that's a great question, Peter. Is that it? Can I turn it over to the blue or the panel members?
I've got one other, one other, a couple of other things. I would like to back up, I meant to bring up at the Adelaide meeting that you were at, the question of the street, the blacktop work. We've had our area done, and it's wonderful. I think one of the huge selling points that Federal Way has is that the roads are in the best shape anywhere you look. So, and I think it's been cut back by half, I think it needs to go back to 100%. And it's something that, it means an awful lot to people here. And so the other question I, and then one more, if we can spend, say, $600,000 with our eyes closed on paying debt, how much, what's the total that we could pay before we have, before we're up, before we can't take anymore? So if this is 600,000, is it 1,600,000? Is it 2 million? Is it? I want to know what percentage we're borrowing at, and what our ability is to handle this.
That's a great question, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you leave the podium, because you may have follow-up, panel members, are you, Pam, you run the Auburn facility, right? Do you have any experience or knowledge about what happened at the Linwood?
We, this community, we all discussed it.
Thank you very much. David?
Fortunately, the consultant that we used to do the case studies included Linwood among the five cities, as I mentioned in the PowerPoint. So on pages 75 and 76 of this now public report, 75, 6, and 7, I believe, is a summary of what happened before in terms of development there, economic development, and after the Linwood Convention Center was built. Bottom line is, it was opened in 2005, just before, or a couple of years before the Great Recession. So it was, in terms of redevelopment in that area, they wanted it to be a catalyst, but it wasn't during the Great Recession. And of course, we're just now coming out of the Great Recession. There's a lot more detail in here for anybody, the gentleman or anybody else who's interested in Linwood. I can't, I don't think we can answer the question about what the city's subsidy, it's not actually operated by the city, it's operated by the Linwood Public Facility District, which I assume is a separate entity that was created by the city and the county, or two or more entities. So we don't have that information, although we could find it and provide it to you.
I think, Councilmember Honda?
Is it a convention center, or is it a performing arts center with a convention center? How big is, what is it?
It's 34,000 square feet, and the largest room has a capacity for about 1,400 people.
But it's strictly a convention center.
It's not a performing arts center?
No. Although there probably have been performances there, but it's a convention center. There's a lot of convention centers where you can have a performance, but it doesn't have a stage, probably.
Right, but-
Or an auditorium-like facility.
That is, an apples-apples comparison is important. That's why we, that's why we looked at NIDA, because of the McIntyre Hall is such a spot-on comparison. Patrick is?
Well, I was just going to say, on that page, it does talk about the city subsidy as well in Linwood's case, which is $25,000 a year.
Peter, did you hear that? Patrick, what was that again?
Well, I was just saying that in the Linwood study, or in Linwood case, the city contributed $25,000 a year to the Linwood Convention Center. It isn't run by the city, it's a public facilities district, but the city contributes $25,000. $25,000.
They probably have, it sounds like they may have taxing authority as well.
Well, the Public Facilities District has created taxing authority to load those initial bonds for the capital.
I see.
In that county. It's different in every county but King County. We often run into that where the state law is something everywhere but this county, and then we have a different angle on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I appreciate Patrick's clarification. I missed that comment in here. It is on page 75, in the middle, in the middle of that page, it does say the Linwood Convention Center receives a $25,297 public subsidy. It doesn't say what public entity, but it says public subsidy. I guess, Patrick, you know that it is the city that's providing?
I thought, I'd heard it was, but you know, that's.
So I misspoke when I said it isn't in here. It is in here.
But the other thing it says, I should read the rest of that sentence, is really interesting. It says that that's a 94 percent reduction in reliance and subsidies since 2009, and that was during the recession. So they're doing a pretty good job of this.
Okay.
And they have rebounded, so they've been doing better in terms of revenue, so.
Rob, can you say that again? Bob Marster of that Subcommittee has just made a comment. Rob?
I just wanted to point out that over recent years, they have rebounded significantly from that. There is significant interest in redevelopment around the area where there was not before, and revenues have increased. So things have picked back up after the recession.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Maloney and then Councilmember Warren.
Thank you. I was wondering if there are any performing arts and conference centers that have been reviewed that were designed as catalysts and whether they were successful.
The, from the consultant study, the five that were selected to be comparable to our city and its demographics and have a facility that is at least somewhat comparable to the proposed PAC here, the one that in fact intended to have it be a catalyst, an economic development catalyst, was Linwood. Well, it said, you know, the report said Fairfield, but our analysis was that really wasn't supported in the text. So that's either, that's either a mistake or an overstatement. So we concluded one of the five was considered a catalyst. That's arguable, I suppose. The one in Iowa, they said also was, but in our review of their own report, we thought, we were a little more conservative. We thought not.
All right. Councilmember Warren, then we've got to get to Ms. Nelson.
Great. A quick question to Patrick. I just wanted you to repeat the last statement you made in terms of the reliance.
Turns up the.
Internally reliance, 94 percent.
Oh, well, I'm just reading from the report. So what it says that in Linwood's case, the center received $25,947, or, that's not the right number, $25,297 in public subsidy, which is a 94 percent reduction in reliance on public subsidy since 2009. So, I mean, we're not parsing Linwood here, but it's just an example that that venue, even during the recession, was able to stay positive and in fact rely 94 percent less on public subsidy during that timeframe.
So just doing some quick math, it probably started at about $350,000 or something like that, and now it's down to $25,000 in four years, five years.
Get a recession.
Through a recession.
Okay. Margaret, Ms. Nelson. Thank you for waiting.
I'm quite glad to. I've been very impressed by the report. I've been very impressed by the financial director's clear explanation of where money can come from tonight. I think he's done a tremendous job in moving me forward. I would like to say that I've lived in Federal Way almost 30 years. We deserve to have a nice downtown. We deserve to have a performing arts and conference center that will encourage other developers to come and to build retail and residences that are high-end and not low-end. We deserve to be proud of our downtown and to feel confident that we can ask people to come and we will feel good when they come. I urge you to please forward this project. Otherwise, we have got another 30 years when nothing will happen. If this goes forward, all of our houses are going to go up in value. So we get to pay more taxes, and it'll help to pay that debt off quicker. But that sure beats being in a downward spiral, which we are not breaking out of. We need to break out of it. We need to move forward. We need to do this big, nice, worthwhile project so that our city will be recognized as being one of the wonderful places, which we know it is, but we need to bring other people in to find out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Betty Taylor?
I don't, my name is Betty Taylor. I don't know if you guys have been reading the newspaper lately, because if you have, you will see a report in there that was done by the new editor. I forgot her name.
Mary.
Yes, her. Okay. But she, basically, she, they did a survey, the mayor did a survey, you know, about, you know, like the PAC, should the citizens vote for a PAC or should they not vote for a PAC? And so if you would be patient with me, I would like to read the, if that's okay, but I thought it was a good article. Okay, so let me begin. It says, "Last month, we kicked out our first Federal Way Forum survey asking residents whether the city of Federal Way needs a performing arts and conference center. I am pleased to announce the survey results. We received 279 responses, including 82 print responses and 197 online. Most of the online responses came from people who live in Washington, while people in 25 other states from, wait, in 25 other states from California to New York also responded. We asked the community if Federal Way needs a PAC. 51 percent or 151 people said yes. The city should build the PAC." And this is one citizen's comment. It says, "I am a member of the Jet Cities Corps of Sweet Airlines International." One response, "We do many events in the city every year and do not receive any money for doing so. We enjoy doing this for the city. There is presently no venue in Federal Way for groups like ours and many others to perform for a large number of people. Building a PAC would be a huge bonus for the performing groups and the city." Other, others agreed, saying the city does not have a venue for accommodation, conferences, ballet, or dance troupes. Sumner, Auburn, and Kent all have centers, and they always, they're always turning conferences away, wrote another participant. Now, one of our schools has an auditorium. Every high school in Platteville has one. Why are we so anti-culture here? Okay. Another participant wrote, "Federal Way has long mowed it in the dreads of suburban mediocrity. While it is unlikely that the PAC would be anything but mediocre, the development might, 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 excuse me, we realized the white spot on the freeway. Plus, it would be nice."
Betty? You know, I actually just wanted to make sure about a couple of things. The article is actually still online with the Federal Way Mirror?
Yeah.
And so I would direct, you know, so thank you.
Everybody to the article?
The article's still online.
Okay.
In the opinion section of the Federal Way Mirror.
Okay.
And I did want to say that the actual number of respondents was 55 percent in favor. But is there anything that you want to tell us about the performing arts, about the panel findings? Or what do you think we should do with this?
Okay, sorry. I just thought that was a good article. I, yeah, I did. I thought that just caught my eye. I, you know, I think it's a good idea to have the blue ribbon panel, and I'm very impressed with their findings, very impressed with the whole study that was done. But I, myself, for one, I'm basically, I'm not really, I'm not, I'm really not for the PAC. I'm really not. I just feel like it's going to be a financial, like, disaster myself and stuff. So as far as like the PAC is concerned, you know, I know the blue ribbon panel, like I said, did an excellent job, and the mayor and the city council are working, working with the blue ribbon panel. But as for me, I think it's going to be a financial.
Thank you, Betty. That's what we needed to know. Thank you. I directed it to the article. No, no, no. Read the first one.
I did.
Yeah. Hold on. Hold on.
She was trying to get to the bottom.
Time for not to. I thought I was done with that. City Council meetings, another six. Sorry, we're talking about what the Federal Way Mirror article. Thank you, Betty. I think actually, let me just clarify. The Federal Way Mirror article, the respondent said 55 percent said it should happen, but I believe the same number said that should be up for a vote.
Yes.
And that's what we are sitting here discussing. So I think that's ultimately maybe what Betty was working her way through or to, and in fairness to her, we want to bring that up. Thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I want to congratulate the panel and you, Mr. Mayor, for this idea. It was, as was pointed out before, this was an idea that probably should have been implemented some time ago because I think it put many fears to rest. And in particular, I wanted to congratulate the people that did the economic study. You guys have blown me away. I mean, the detail, your estimates of the multiplier effect are nothing short of phenomenal. In my preliminary analysis of this program, and Patrick can attest to the fact that I ran him through the ringer for hours, I came up with very similar conclusions to what the Capital Group came up with and what the Pro forma group came up with. That was not a particular surprise. You guys just surprised the hell out of me. If what you're saying is halfway true, there can be no question that this project goes forward. Because if you think about the economic impact that this will have on our community, it is nothing short of phenomenal. I mean, have you guys come up, two questions. Have you come up with an estimate for the multiplier effect, a numerical estimate? And second, have you come up with a unified financial model for the entire structure that is where you're integrating capital requirements pro forma and the multiplier effects that will have on city revenue so that we can see in one spot, in a spreadsheet that individuals can play with and play their own what-if games? Perhaps that might be very, very helpful. Anyway, again, congratulations to all of you. And, Mr. Mayor, this was a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Councilmember Maloney.
I have to agree with Paul that I, can you hear me? Okay, that the work that was done was really phenomenal. I'm struggling, though, to understand whether the inducement that is described in the economic development portion of it is really inducement. I mean, how do, I'm questioning, how do you know that that multiplier effect is the result of the PAC going in or if it's just going to happen inevitably as the economy gets better and we start attracting development, maybe through other means? Were you able to track it directly to the PAC? That's my question.
I think that's two different questions, Councilmember Maloney. The first question on the multiplier effect, the numbers that you saw on those tables, both in terms of one-time construction and ongoing, both directly from the PAC itself as well as potential redevelopment, reuse and redevelopment around, were the result of a very detailed analysis using established nationally-recognized multipliers to get those numbers for sales, for earnings.
Specific to performing arts and conference centers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wasn't clear on that. Okay, thank you.
But the other part of the question, excuse me, refresh my memory because I separated, and I can't remember the second part.
Or was it other catalyzed?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. Thank you. We only arrived at the conclusion we did about reuse and redevelopment being inevitable, but not being able to predict the timing, not based on our own opinions, but based upon the marketplace. And we assess the marketplace by interviewing and obtaining written feedback from the seven experienced local developers and the commercial broker. That's what that's based on. They all concluded that it would have a positive influence. Most of them said it would be a catalyst. A couple of them said you need to do this and you need to do that in order for them to be able to proceed with their type of project. But the most important thing is that most of them, there was a consensus, at least among most of them, or a majority opinion, clear majority. And by the way, we have documented all of the interviews. It's an attachment in the report, to the report if you haven't noticed it. So you can read, you can read our summary of their comments as well as a background on each firm, but it was their conclusion. So based on that conclusion, we said we thought redevelopment and reuse was inevitable. And the scenarios, we picked to illustrate what the potential is at full build-out of those scenarios.
Thank you very much. One, just one further question. Is it possible to see if we can find one or two or three performing arts and conference centers in the United States that were created as catalysts and to find out whether they really were able to catalyze or create more development in the surrounding area? I did ask this at the retreat, two retreats ago, and I'm still not seeing it.
Let me begin. There is some information, but I think we can do more research. There's some in the report and also in the notebook that everybody got before the panel that came from, you know, from the internet, whether it was.
Ohio.
Ohio, there was interviews with different cities, and so that's in there. I'll make sure, if it's not, that I find that. But I think we could potentially find some more information. And there's different levels. I mean, I think that you find some that say that it really started the transition and you'll, and others that say that it, you know, was part of what, part of other strategies. One of the difficult things is oftentimes it's not the sole thing that a community does. A community finds itself in a place where it wants to help redevelop its city center or whatever part of city it might be. And so there's a strategy, I mean, there's a set of strategies. And so then to come back 10 years later and say it was only this one that did it, it might be hard to say that. It might be hard, it might be more that through everything the city did, and that could have been the crowning achievement, that it led to redevelopment. That's kind of some of the things you read in these studies anecdotally. But there are, I think, I think there are a couple in what's already in your notebooks that talk about that, and I can continue to look for some if you'd like.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, because we're going to, we're going to come back on May 20th, and it would be great to hear that. And Patrick, while you're doing that, can you please maybe drill down a little bit on the Linwood example and just kind of give us a fresh perspective of what's happening at Linwood?
Well, yeah, Linwood was chosen, obviously, because we're a similar type of community, a suburban, shopping district-oriented community on the, you know, 20 miles or so from the city, from the central city. And so they built their convention center. That is a different facility. As Councilmember Honda pointed out, it's not as robust a business model, frankly, because you don't have as much evening events, you have more of the daytime convention centers. So they did that together with a lot of zoning strategies and infrastructure right before the recession in order to kickstart some more development of parts of their city center. And while, as the panel pointed out, the Subcommittee specifically, the redevelopment in the immediate vicinity of the convention center hasn't yet happened. There's no vacancies, however. When we visited there, I visited there with Lorax Partners and NIDA because it was an easier place for her to commute to from Mount Vernon. And we got a tour and then discussed that with the vicinity. And he said that one of the things was that that area, and I don't know if you've been there, but it's not the best part of Linwood. It's kind of off the beaten track. It's nowhere near the mall, it's nowhere near the main strip centers, it's kind of on this secondary. It's kind of on this secondary area. And what the gentleman from the Linwood, the director, said that when they opened, there was a lot of vacancies around. There are older strip centers immediately around it, and it was very vacant. And now it's not, that there's eateries mostly, which they can generally attribute to that. Now, that's not the level of redevelopment that the city hopes eventually will occur. But as Dave Berger just pointed out a moment ago, or no, actually, Rob was saying that, that interest by developers in Linwood has substantially increased since the recession has eased. So, you know, it's hard to say, you know, what will happen in that immediate vicinity. The thing I'd say that differentiates that facility from us and this potential facility is, one, while the immediate environs today don't look that great, it is a great part of town. I mean, it's the center of the town. It's visible from, as soon as you get off the freeway, near the transit center. That center in Linwood is not. And it's a better business model, because it's got the two distinct lines of business. You've got the performance-type based stuff and then the daytime, you know. So theoretically, when it's up and running after two, three years, you have events during the day, events during the evening, events during the weekend, so it's not dark half the time, which is the problem with the only performance center or only conference center. And I think Councilmember Duklo pointed this out at our retreat in 2009, which is why we joined the two business models into one idea. Hope that helped at all.
It did. Councilmember Sephardos.
Back to numbers, and this is for the pro forma subcommittee. NIDA's net profit for year two is only 3,600. So that just, if you can explain that to me. Page 26, I'm sorry, on the PowerPoint. PowerPoint, page 26.
She did say that the second year would be the hardest year, not the first, so that's probably why it's lower, because she felt the first year, there's a lot of excitement. And then the second year of some of that excitement goes away, but that usually stabilizes by the third year.
When you look at the other ones, it's still extremely low. So just making sure it's not a typo.
I can probably jump in, because I work with her. And Scott, why don't you echo what I say? I'll just start something. Basically, she took the pro forma that was given to her, that Joe McElwain had done last September, and she wanted to be more conservative. So she cut revenue from his pro forma, but she didn't add anything back in. So she basically started the kind of cut from it. And that's why it's low numbers.
In addition, if you look at the detail of it, in year one, the City of Federal Way from the allocation from the capital budget has an additional $150,000. In year two, that goes to $75,000. In year three, that goes to zero. So that's, so when you, it starts to stabilize in year three, and then it'll start growing. But there's those additional funds in year one and year two that are cut, that are continued. It goes from 150 down to 75. That's in addition to the 200,000 that we, that is consistent through the first five years.
Scott, tell her what you're looking at.
I'm looking on the actual pro forma thing on page two of Appendix A. So I'm in tab three.
Page 58.
Oh, yeah, page 30.
No, no, look at the side.
Yeah, I know.
Tab three?
Page, yeah, tab three, page 35.
Thank you.
Yeah. And you'll see that goes down, so it's, and it's actually 150 in year zero, 150 in year one, and then drops down. So there's that big reduction in revenue as well.
What's that? Councilmember Maloney.
So one more question in regard to timing, and I don't know whether this is the right, if I ask you guys, or Patrick, or whomever, but if we were to move forward on the performing arts and conference center, and we had alterations that we would be interested in suggesting in specifically, you know, adding a catering kitchen and that so forth, at what point do we make those decisions?
I have to take this tape off, because I'm leaning further than I can. All right, so when, is that working? I know, exactly. So when, whenever the council is ready to engage that discussion and make that decision, yea or nay, whether it's in June or whatever it is, we, very shortly, in the next few working days, will have the cost implications of the different alternatives related to some alterations. So basically, we have two or three, I'd say, alteration possibilities. We have the existing footprint, just as it is exactly as designed and presented in September. There's a minimal set of changes that maximizes or optimizes some circulation issues, some storage issues, the concession area, the box office area, the house. There's, NIDA did a really good job of walking us through that, and literally, I mean, the panel was just blown away with how you, she made us envision exactly how, if you were standing here, this is too tight, and if you did that, that's too long, and whatever. So as much, as well designed as it was, she was able to find some improvements. Most of those enhancements are going to be very minimal cost changes. There could be a slight additional cost, because the vestibule in the current design is inboard of the window wall, but that pinches some of the waiting area between the vestibule and the concessions or box office. But if you put that vestibule outboard in the weather, then you freed up more space on the inside, and everybody believed that made more sense for a really packed house type event. So there'd be a little tiny bit of extra cost. The next scenario is the one which would bring, which would have a full kitchen. The full kitchen doesn't, per se, add space, because it just occupies the space that's there. But it moves some things, and in order to move some things, about 1,500 additional square feet would need to be added. And it probably would be less, but there's a perfect line to draw to make a square, and then that actually adds storage as well, which was a comment that there should be more storage. So we don't have the cost estimate on that yet. There, I was speaking with our development partner yesterday about it, and they're working on it. So we will, by whatever timeframe you want to make a decision, we will have that additional, that additional information about the cost implications of alterations.
Okay, Susan and DeeDee.
Patrick, we had talked about the kitchen a while ago, and we had talked about having a full-service hotel who would have a kitchen that this, the PAC could use.
Right.
So if the Hilton were to come in, that's a full-service hotel from what
Right.
I glanced through last night, why would the PAC then need a full-service kitchen?
That's a really good question. The whole issue's a good question. Well, Scott, let me start answering, and then Scott will.
This is why, can I interrupt? This is why we put together a full-service panel, because Scott Brown has a career in hospitality management.
Let me, let me start and give it to Scott, because he'll know the answer. I mean, let me just start something and just say that, right now, we're looking at the kitchen in the facility, because that was mentioned to us. And if a kitchen, a full catering kitchen is provided in a facility, you have, the chef obviously has to be on staff, but really, almost everyone below that is part-time, sort of on-call as events occur. So the overhead, and obviously, you have to buy the supplies for the events, and you've scheduled those events, you know when you're having them. So the overhead for a catering kitchen that can accommodate restaurant-quality food is totally different from the overhead of an ongoing, open every day, all-day-long restaurant with the sign out and the neon on that this is a restaurant. And so maybe now, Scott, you can add to that.
Well, I'll just speak from, as a hotelier. When you're looking at a, you have one acre, what you're going to build?
So speaking as a hotelier, it's my independent opinion that we have one acre, what you're going to build, 121 rooms. You'll use every square foot that you can to make a guest room, because that's where the return on profit is. And they, your chances of getting someone with 121-room hotels put in a full service and take up space for a restaurant and all that are reduced. They're minimal, because of the footprint and what they want to do. And so to get their return, they'll make it as many guest rooms as possible.
Let me add two things, though, to that. One is, in addition, why it's difficult, is kind of, I was implying in what I answered, which is that, once you've decided you're going to run a restaurant, you've got a lot of staff and supplies and everything, every day, irrespective of whether there's an event happening at that, the PAC that day. And you just hope that then, of course, it's a good restaurant on its own, and if people want to go there just because it's a restaurant, and then it happens to double as the catering facility for the PAC. So there's a lot of ifs, and what ifs that happen there. But the other issue is that we haven't abandoned the notion of discussing further, as this project potentially proceeds, with our development partner as a negotiation point. It's just that I think Scott is informing us that the chances are slim that that would be a successful negotiation point, but we haven't given it up.
Right. Councilmember Duklo.
Thank you very, thank you very much. And again, thank you all for the work that you put into this. I don't know how many months it's been, but it seems like five years.
We would agree.
I think you would, but this has been a wonderful report. I just have a question on page 35 on the operating budget. And here it says, "The City of Federal Way annual support of $200,000 a year." Is that an ongoing support, or did you see that diminishing as the performing arts and conference center picked up its revenue?
Well, we didn't project it past, I mean, that would be a decision to make after year three, four, or five, or something like that, because, but we, so we have it through the first five years, for sure, just to build up the reserves.
I understand, right, yeah.
But if it's performing better than expected, then you could look at possibly. But we wanted to build up that reserve for replacement. That was a, and so I think that would be the determining factor, is what's your reserve for replacement at the end of five years, then you could be looking at that. And again, I think Patrick already said it, but the potential for this to be, to use lodging tax dollars is, that's where the initial thought is, that would be paid by the visitors.
Thank you.
All right, council, Councilmember Solsky.
Yeah, you know, just as a follow-up on that question, that was a good question. So on page 26 of the presentation, that's the pro forma scenario. We have the three different scenarios there for years one through five, and then kind of a sum at the end there. So that, does I take it, include the subsidy? Okay. So it looks like that hypothetical worst case, I mean, that would be, you know, a negative $800,000 plus another $1 million that the city had put into this. Okay, just wanted clarification on that. Thank you.
Over the course of five?
Yes.
Yeah, Councilmember Maloney.
This is actually more of a comment. When it was being presented about the reduced advertising marketing, marketing and advertising budget by 10%, using electronic media rather than print, I want to caution that there are still considerable expenses involved in electronic media and advertising. You know, you have to pay for Google Ads, you have to pay for SEO, search engine optimization placement, or search engine optimization, you know what I'm trying to say. And also production of different elements for advertising, if you're doing videos or anything. Yes, you can put it on YouTube, but, you know, there are still inherent expenses, and sometimes they're more expensive than print, especially as time goes on, I think that they will increase. So I just wanted to caution the panel on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to say anything, even if you haven't filled out a fig sheet? Anyone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, you guys.
Council, anything else before we, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I just, as Deputy Mayor, on the behalf of the council, I wanted to add my, the council's appreciation and my personal appreciation to this outstanding panel of individuals who have given the city so much, your time, your expertise, your experience. It is just phenomenal what you have helped our city with over the street. So, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Moore.
Oh, we're going to sign them up for another project?
Watch them run fast.
I was going to drop that on the next that we see, Tim. Dang it.
That into the bud.
Exactly. All right. Well, I, anything else for the good of the order?
How about a German?
What's that?
How about a German?
Yeah, exactly. All right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Under my, uh, thank you.